I'd like to say good evening to everyone. And now we bring to order the Culpeper County Planning Commission meeting for the month of October. We welcome you all here this evening. And as we've done the past few years, and it's to in October Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we acknowledge those who are fighting that. And also, we acknowledge the families who've lost loved ones to the battle. But we just wanted to take the time out to say that in this month of October. And being one who has experienced that in the family, I know it's something that you wish you could help the family with, the family member with, but of course, some things we don't have control of. Also, those who are in Tampa and those places who are getting ready to deal with another hurricane right after the first, we just ask that you all keep them in your prayers. Okay? Now, we'll move on with our meeting. The next item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. And additions or deletions? If so, acknowledge you now. If not?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Our agenda has been approved for tonight. Next, the approval of the minutes of September the 11th meeting. We received those. What's your pleasure there?
Moved to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, those minutes will be put to record. Now, we move to the fun part, the new business. Neil, we turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have case Z 458 23-1. It's a request by Compton and Dueling L.C., Sherman Patrick, to rezone 254.63 acres from R.A., rural area, and R1 residential to R3 residential and LI, light industrial, for the development known as Armstrong Plan Community. The applicant is proposing to use the property for single-family attached and detached units numbering 770 dwelling units, as well as commercial and light industrial uses per proffer statement submitted by the applicant dated August 29, 2024. Property is located between Knolls Mill Road, Route 667, and Bragg's Corner Road, Route 666, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 41, parcels 111, 111A, and 111D.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As Neil wrote into the record, we have a significant rezoning that we're considering tonight that's been advertised for public hearing, and Jason notices have gone out. And that one that staff has been working with on the applicant for a little bit of time already. But it's a major rezoning, as Neil mentioned, occupy several acres. The parcels, plural, parcels that are shown on the screen there, highlighted in red, is the area that's seeking to be rezoned. It's currently a mixed-use zoning today, actually, has predominantly R.A., rural area zoning on the property, but there's a little bit of R1 along Rogers Road and Marathon Drive there that is there today. As Neil mentioned, it's they're seeking to rezone to a mixed-use category of sorts, again, primarily being this time R3 zoning for single-family dwellings and townhomes, and then some light industrial along Rogers Road and Marathon Drive, which would actually match the existing industrial that you see in purple. The other areas that you see in color there, you have a little bit of residential from the area character there, along Rogers Road, near the intersection of Bragg's Corner Road. And then the green that's remaining is also zoned rural area, except for across the street, which is across Knolls Mill, that actually is zoned light industrial now for data center activity. And that's been recent. Ms. Chairman, before we get started into the staff review tonight, I just wanted to make the commission aware and those that are here for this case tonight, that the applicant did submit this afternoon a letter to request deferral of action by the planning commission tonight. The applicant has received a staff report in the past couple of weeks and would like to make an effort to not necessarily resolve all the concerns, but make an effort to amend their application in hopes to do that. Ms. Chairman, I've posted the request for deferral on board docs. Each of you got that through your emails earlier today. I don't plan to read the entire letter, but I did want to point out, on behalf of the applicant, there were several things that are mentioned specifically in response to the staff report that the applicant would like to have the opportunity to work on. And that was their justification for requesting deferral tonight. If we move forward tonight, the applicant is prepared to move forward with their presentation, as is staff. And I would recommend that if we do, that we do open the public hearing since it was advertised. And Ms. Chairman, if it is the desire of the planning commission to table or defer the matter, given that the applicant seeks to modify or change their application somewhat, it would be good to potentially continue the public hearing if that's the desire to table or defer the matter tonight. With that, Ms. Chairman, I'll go ahead and kind of highlight some of the staff. If it's the will of the planning commission, highlight some of the things that were mentioned in the staff report, which was also posted on board docs. As with any case, especially a significant rezoning case, one of the primary tools the planning commission is familiar with, that we use as a guide, is the comprehensive plan. And this is just an aerial shot that just kind of paints the picture of the area as well. Again, the parcel itself, I was expecting a red dot, not this. That's a cool feature, too. But it just kind of shows the area character. You have some industrial in this area here with some commercial that's existing, major interchange there at 666 and Route 29, of course, with Eastern View and Sports Complex on the other side of the road. Main arterial road that goes back into the town of Culpepper crossing the railroad tracks, and then, of course, Knolls Mill. Large amount of frontage for this particular property along Knolls Mill that goes back into town. And you see some red earth that's moving there, which is a Williams Mill development, which sits about right here. It's an age-restricted development that was recently approved as well. This is from the comprehensive plan. This is a future land use map as it was adopted in 2023, so a fairly recent comprehensive plan. It did change a little bit specifically for this area. Again, the site is highlighted with the hatched, crosshatching there. The pink color that you see, if you can't see the legend, this area does show up as mixed-use in the comprehensive plan today. The applicant does have a mixed-use proposal of sorts with a little bit of light industrial, or up to 130,000 square feet, I believe, of industrial, 770 dwelling units, as well as some open space and some potential civic uses as well. So in some ways, does meet that definition, if you will, that is found in the comprehensive plan as far as a mixed-use. Pretty, in my mind, anyway, since we wrote the staff report, it's a fairly thorough staff report as far as comparing the things that we need to look at for the comprehensive plan when we're considering this. The land use chapter is usually the primary, and this is part of the land use chapter of this particular map. But some other things that are mentioned in the land use chapter, and why the applicant is probably here, is it is part of the urban services boundary, which basically means it's near public utilities or has public utilities. It's shown as actually a future growth area, as a Bragg's Corner eastern business area. And already is a host of a wide range of, you know, current residential uses, not to the scale, but also commercial and industrial uses in the area. So not totally out of character for what you already see there. Transportation-wise, and that's something that the applicant has spent a lot of time on, really at the direction of staff, but they knew they needed to do that anyway with this particular site. There are a number of transportation improvements that the comprehensive plan spells out that staff believe will need to occur, or some of them will need to occur prior to this application moving forward, at least in staff's opinion. Some of those are improvements to Bragg's Corner Road as far as a widening in the future. The applicant necessarily won't be responsible for that, but intersection improvements at Rogers Road and Bragg's Corner Road, which is a significant, unsignaled intersection today. And there may be some improvements as well to Knolls Mill Road itself, which has some geometry challenges, if you will, with curvature. And it's a two-lane road with narrow shoulders, or if any shoulders, at some parts of that road. So there are significant transportation issues that staff, the applicant has worked on, but that believe there is room for a little bit of improvement there. From Chapter 4, you're talking about environmental and historic resources. Just one thing to point out from an environmental standpoint, kind of in the middle part of the property, or more towards the west of the property, there is a significant tributary. The applicant has produced a concept plan that does protect that corridor for floodplain. There is a 100-year designated FEMA floodplain that's throughout that property, does bisect that property. There's one crossing, and if I had my pointer, I could show it a little bit better, but it's about right there on the northern part that's proposed. But by and large, protecting that floodplain is accomplished with the concept plan that the applicant has submitted. Economic development is another section of the comprehensive plan. Community resources is another big section of the comprehensive plan, and that's something that staff has stressed, and the applicant has addressed somewhat through their initial proffer statement. And as the request for deferral indicates, they would like to work a little bit more on that proffer statement, which staff encourages them to do. And what that means is basically when we're considering any rezoning, especially one of this magnitude, we need to think about community resources, and community resources being schools, fire, EMS, the courthouse, different things that we have, parks and recreation, and of course, the public utilities that are involved. All those things that are needed to have a healthy community. And those are things that get stressed if they're not accomplished or taken care of with a project of this size. Specifically, when it comes to transportation, again, there was another thing that was pointed out in the staff report as far as the gap small area plan. Many of you on the planning commission were here in '22 when we looked at that, and that specifically related to transportation, and that was something that was referenced in the staff report as well. Ms. Chairman, I'm almost done going through this a little bit here. One thing that the applicant did submit recently was a revised TIA or traffic impact analysis, a significant document, takes some time to put together. They have worked with VDOT and staff on that. It's a thousand-plus-page document. If you're tired, look at it at night, but there's a lot of calculations in there. But Bowman has done that. They've done some scoping, and by and large, we're waiting on VDOT, you know, at this point with the TIA. They have weighed in with the initial and the subsequent submittal, but the final revised version, we're still waiting feedback, or at least official feedback on that document. And that's something I think that we probably really want to wait on before we move on as well, considering that TIA. The town of Culpepper did weigh in as well with some comments, and those were posted as well for consideration. The town of Culpepper shares some transportation concerns that were pointed out with Bragg's Corner Road, and then specifically back in town, a 1529 business with the intersections there that have difficulties today. The applicant does have some proffer statement that talks to monetary contributions towards schools, towards parks and rec, towards EMS, the Carver Center, and some other things. And those certainly are welcome and help mitigate some of the impacts to community resources, and we hope that the applicant continue to move forward in that vein with that proffer statement there. Ms. Chairman, with those comments, I'll stop now, but at this point, staff is not recommending approval in its current form of this application as we move forward. As I mentioned, there are some things that the comprehensive plan does point in its favor, but when we're looking at a project of this size with 770 total units, several or over 100,000 square feet of commercial industrial space, there's some significant challenges and logistics that have to happen to make sure things are properly mitigated and to make sure this area continues to function the way it does today or even better. So we need to work for those things, and I believe that things need to be mitigated a little bit better than what they are today. Ms. Chairman, the applicant I know does have a presentation as well. Just a different illustration of what's being proposed, and I'll close with, this is the area that they show for, the main area for industrial, potential commercial and industrial uses. Of course, the neighborhood here, I believe these are the designated townhouse areas with single-family development here. Potential civic use, potentially a fire station area here, as well as some commercial uses as well. And then, of course, you have some ball fields and different things through and out that are, would be more neighborhood development-type features at that point. Ms. Chairman, on behalf of entertaining any questions, I know the applicant, looks like they have a significant team here tonight as well, but, and may be able to address anything a lot better than I can.
Thank you very much, Sam. We'll go ahead and let the applicant come forth, and then if we have any questions, as the commissioners will ask those later. Okay, at this time, I'm now on the applicant, Representative, come and give your full name for the record, please.
Sherman Patrick, I'm with comprehensive, I'm sorry, I'm with Compton and Dueling, and I'm here this evening representing Ryan Holmes in this application. Thank you very much for your time this evening. We appreciate it. I also want to give our thanks to the planning staff for their thorough analysis of the proposal as we've been working through this process. We've been working on it more than a year. The application's been in for a year. However, Ryan was participating and watching your comprehensive plan as it unfolded when you did your comprehensive plan update. And so they've been engaged and being very mindful of the process as it is today. Do I have a slide or a pointer? I can use?
You might get the red dot.
I don't know, I'm standing in spotlight. So as it was already mentioned, we did receive our staff report a little lesson two weeks ago. There were some items in there that we were not anticipating, but we're willing to address them in greater detail. We have been engaged in this process, as I said, for a very long time. We very much want to be involved in the community. We want to be able to have a good application for you to give your final recommendation on. We do not have comments yet from VDOT. And VDOT and transportation is something that we've worked very hard on, and one of the reasons that it's taken as long as it has to try to get to this point with you this evening. We do appreciate you allowing us to speak this evening. We look forward to hearing your comments. We look forward to hearing comments from the public, in addition to those we've already received from staff, and we're going to work very hard to address all of those concerns. The presentation I have is, I have a lot of slides. I'm not going to try to make you sit through all of them. I'm going to try to keep myself to 20 minutes. But we've broken it down into a kind of a process, I thought I would alert you ahead of time. We're first going to talk about the zoning and planning, which in part has already been covered. The proposal itself, we want to talk about transportation. There was an economic analysis that was submitted. I don't plan to spend a lot of time on that, but Dr. Fuller from the Stephen Fuller Institute was prepared an economic analysis for us that was provided with the application. There's a level-of-service analysis that was prepared by a company in Northern Virginia that does an analysis of the county's CIP, your capital improvements plan, and compares it to the population-driven types of impacts that we see in communities like this. So there is that document as well. And then the applicant has provided community design features, and we have some final site factors that we want to have some discussion about. So with respect to the location of the property, I think you're all pretty familiar with it, but it is always good to take a look at the map and see what is surrounding the site. And this property is very nicely located near James Madison Highway, so it has very good accessibility. It is fronting on Knolls Mill Road, which is an older road, ditch section road, also on Bragg's Corner Road. Bragg's Corner Road has some ditch section on it, but it was substantially upgraded by VDOT with some interchange improvements. I'm going to find out if I have a dot, or I don't know that I have either. Top button? Well, I do have the dot. Okay. So the interchange is located right here, a little bit north of the dot. The property, as I mentioned before, is very close to the interchange. Rogers Road is the primary intersection and transportation challenge for the property. And so we've spent a lot of time talking about that. There is a document, the gap analysis, that talks about the prospects of having a roundabout located in this area. However, the transportation improvements that were set up by VDOT when they did the improvements in this area, plans for an intersection, a signalized intersection. And in our analysis, we found that the signalized intersection would address all of the impacts of this proposal, as well as into the, well into the future for the volume of traffic that is moving through that area right now and in the future. The recent responses that we've provided to the staff report that we received are to add a school site. You see it there, near the railroad, the town of Culpepper, and the town of Culpepper municipal boundary. Also, the fire station site was already included in the application. But what we're doing in addition to proposing a school site, they're also proffering to do rough grading for the school site and the fire station site, and that's new for the fire station proffer, and also to extend utilities to both of those sites, so that both of the sites will be very ready for development when the county is ready to take those over and ready to provide services. The existing zoning in the area is a combination of rural agricultural and R1 residential and some light industrial. The yellow that you see within the black boundary is already zoned, has some light industrial in it. And this is zooming in a little bit closer so that you can see those more directly. You can see the Norfolk Southern Railway at the top of the slide. Bragg's Corner Road is labeled there, a little more easily read, as is Rogers Road. Knolls Mill Road is the larger frontage from the property and actually passes between a part of the property. The portion of the site that is south of Knolls Mill Road, right where you see the word "mill," that portion of the property is not planned for any development. We had talked one time about that site being a possible park site or being donated for recreation. The Parks and Recreation Department was not really very excited about that. Transportation was concerned about access to it, and topographically, it has some challenges. So we're just reserving that. We changed the plan after our last work session, and we're just reserving that as open space with no future use being planned for it at this point in time. Other changes that have been made was the addition of the fire station site after talking with you all. The proffer conditions have added, since our last work session, a contribution for the Carver Center. There was some discussion about preserving the county's rural agricultural character. We have information in the trails program where we would like to do interpretive markers to talk about the county's agricultural nature so that people can continue to appreciate that. The new residents would come to the community and learn about it, or if they are not transferring here just from another part of the county. In addition to that, there are proposed garden plots there for people who'd be interested in doing outdoor gardening in this setting. We find that to be a very popular activity these days as areas develop. This, again, is quite as good as the map that was shown to you earlier, identifies the mixed-use designation of the property. The mixed-use description in the comprehensive plan talks about moderate to high-density residential and commercial development, and so that's what we've proposed. They talk about properties should be located in the future growth areas and within urban service boundaries, and the property is. And then the light description, the description of light industrial use talks about current and future employment centers and locations that require good access and have utilities to infrastructure. And our commercial areas are our light industrial zone areas, which also allows a range of commercial uses, meets all of these requirements. Now, staff in the staff report that was issued last week said that they were concerned that there might be some uses that may be incompatible with residential. We agree with that. We don't want to have heavy industrial uses or noisy industrials, this is light industrial zoning. We don't want to have noisy industrial uses. We left manufacturing and light assembly in the list of allowed uses, though, because sometimes you have things that are assembled indoors or manufactured indoors that may strictly, under zoning ordinance definitions, meet those requirements, but they are not going to be visible to the out-of-doors. So because of staff's concern, we plan to add to the proffer conditions that will make sure that outdoor activities are not permitted, or we'll work with staff, we want to have more conversation with them, about making sure that we limit those types of employment activities that everyone is confident was not going to create a conflict with any of the residential that's being proposed in this application. This is just the acreages of the zonings that are proposed. We have R3 cluster at 235 acres and light industrial. We'll need to revise these acreages to make sure that we're properly capturing the public school site that I mentioned, that is shown on the graphic that was shown earlier. The public school site is roughly 30 acres, and so we want to be mindful that that's included in our zoning, and it's one of the reasons that we're asking for more time. This is an illustrative drawing of the site where it's located. It's within a two-and-a-half-square-mile area that was analyzed through the gap analysis or gap study. And so this is only a part of that gap study area. The gap study talked a lot about transportation impacts, and one thing that we've noted is that many of the zonings and development proposals that have been approved since the gap analysis was completed are at lower density than was calculated in the gap analysis. So we're confident that our traffic generation is going to be less. We know that the traffic generation from some of the surrounding properties, data center on the other side of Knolls Mill Road, is going to be substantially less than what was included in the gap analysis. And so we want to bring that information back to you so that you see is kind of a measurement of the progress within the gap area, and you can see how the development and growth is being addressed generally. At the, I'm going to try to use this pointer again, at the very bottom of the screen, if I can get my red dot to move. Okay, I'm not going to use that anymore. At the very bottom of the screen, you see the property that's on the south side of Knolls Mill Road that's going to be undisturbed. We think that has great environmental benefit. It is adjacent to Mountain Run, and we think that keeping it as it is and letting it reestablish or naturally reforest is going to be good for the water quality in the run. Also, along the western boundary of the site, you see, near the western boundary of the site, you see the stream that was mentioned earlier and the floodplain. All of that will be preserved in response to requests from the Soil and Water Conservation District. A riparian buffer has been added to the proffer conditions since our work session to protect the stream and allow that to naturally reforest. And a smaller riparian buffer is proposed along the intermittent streams that feed into that perennial stream that runs north-south through the property. At the very top of the property and adjacent to the railroad, you see the school site. This was not a part of the earlier applications, and we need to add that. It is in direct response to requests or concerns that we see in the report. And a little to the right of that, at the intersection of Enterprise Way and Bragg's Corner Road, the applicant is proffering to dedicate that corner lot for a fire and rescue station. We know that the county is looking to build a school around the Greens Corner area. We're not proposing the school site in competition with that site, but we know that as the county grows, they will continue to need to add properties, and this is an effort to help do advanced planning for the next school site that you may need in this area, particularly within the urban service area where you have planned for higher densities. The same is true of the fire station. We know the fire folks are looking at a different location, perhaps on the north side of the town of Culpepper. This site is not in competition with that site, but this site will serve the route, the James Madison Highway corridor, and the properties that are in the urban service area on the south side of the town of Culpepper. So we think, again, this is a good initiative to help with the advanced planning for infrastructure and public services in the area. With respect to parks and recreation, there are monetary contributions for parks and recreation purposes, but the applicant has made a great effort to provide a lot of that type of service on-site for the community already. Staff expressed a little bit of concern in the staff report, and so we are working, want to work with them now to establish a more specific phasing for those recreational improvements. We had a proffer that committed to providing the pool and the community center very early enough in enough in the project where the homeowners would be able to afford to make the monetary contribution necessary to support it. But the other amenities, we anticipated being built as each section was built, and staff has said that they would like us to fine-tune that and be more specific about when these, the dog park and the community gardens and things like that get constructed. We're completely willing to do that, makes all the sense in the world. We just need a little bit more time to do that. There was discussion in the gap analysis about a railroad crossing, and this is something that the town is very, very interested in. What I've shown you on the screen in a dotted white line is one of the proposed alignments or potential alignments for an extension of Ira Hoffman Drive that would connect with Kaiser Road. There, that, I'm sorry, that one is on Montanis. Let me go back. No, Ira Hoffman's the next one. Okay, so this is the connection that is being discussed now with Montana's Drive, and that's because of some development that is existing along Ira Hoffman Way. We think probably Ira Hoffman Way provides a better opportunity for improving circulation on a larger scale than this particular alignment, but we have provided it because it was asked of us to try to show where that might go or how it'd work. And when we plotted it, as you can see, it is not on the subject property, it is adjacent to it in some places. Enterprise Way, however, would be a logical connection to that connector road, that north-south connector road, and so we're showing that here, and the applicant is proffering the right-of-way for the extension of Enterprise Way to be continued through their property when and if the county determines that this north-south connector is something that it wants to pursue. This is zooming out a little bit to show how the connector might work. In this version, we're using the original concept of connecting to Ira Hoffman Way. We think that that connection to Kaiser makes a lot of sense because Ira Hoffman goes over to Route 229 to the north, which, as you know, is a major north-south connector in the county. And Kaiser Road is a connection that goes down to McDevitt and connects to Route 522 to that interchange. And so on a regional transportation planning basis, we think this is a good idea. It's not on the property, it's not within the scope of the project in order to try to even attempt to build it, but it is a long-range plan, transportation plan, that I'm sure is very important to the county, and we want to be a part of making that possible. So the applicant is proffering now, or willing to proffer, that they'll give a $50,000 contribution towards the future planning of that alignment. At the present time, right-of-way has not been preserved in the town. The concept is on the county plan, and there's been no contact, I understand, with the railroad about an additional crossing over the railroad, and that can be a lengthy process. So that was the reason we thought it would be appropriate to provide some seed money that the county could use and start that planning process to determine what the future fate of the north-south connector would be through this area, through the gap area. So the dwelling unit range that's permitted under the comprehensive plan, R3 cluster would be 707 to 1,886 dwelling units. The proposal is 770, it's on the low end of that range that's permitted. The proposal includes 41% of open space for the cluster area. The density range that's permitted in the R3 is three to eight units per acre. This site is going to be developed or proposed to be developed for 3.27 dwelling units per acre, again, at the low end of the range. The non-residential development proposed is 180,000 square feet of building area. That number precedes the commitment to dedicate the fire station site, and so we'll need to adjust that number in response to giving up part of that non-residential area to a civic use, the future fire station on the property. This is looking at the plan again. Again, a tally of the areas that are being set aside. You have 235 for residential, there is 18, almost 20 acres for light industrial, non-residential, to be adjusted for the fire station site. The open space is over 100 acres. I think that's very notable, and in the comprehensive plan, open space is one of the uses that they consider to be a part of a mixed-use design, and so it's a very substantial part of this particular site, it's a third of the property, more than a third of the property. I highlighted it in a gold color on the right-hand side of this slide at the top, that the school site needs to be added, so that's an additional 30 acres. Our total land use plan will go from 235 to 265, I'm sorry, 285, but 265 will probably be in the R3 residential cluster zoning, something we need to discuss further with staff about what they want that property to be zoned. And the fire station site will need to be added to our tally, we don't have the acreage of that at this point. The applicant, also in response to the staff report and the concern about the impact on public services, has committed now to, or is willing to commit, to 269 age-restricted homes. That 269 homes would be specifically proffered to be occupied by residents who are 55 years of age or above. The federal housing guidelines has an avenue for us to do that, otherwise you might think it was some sort of housing discrimination, but the federal statutes do allow us to do that, they have parameters that we have to follow, but we will add that to the proffered condition. So 269 single-family detached homes will become a much lower impact, virtually zero impact on schools, and there will be lower impacts, substantially lower impacts on transportation, in fact. And so that is another item within the application that we'll be wanting to document and show to you when we come back. The two village center commercial areas are outlined in yellow in this slide. This is actually a slide showing the older layout, it doesn't show the school site, instead it shows recreation, rectangular fields at the top of the illustrative area. It does not show the shape of the fire station, which we have in our newer version, but I wanted to keep this slide in here to make sure that it was clear where the light industrial zoning was being proposed. And the Culpeper County zoning ordinance is pyramidal in the way that it allows uses, I'm sure you all know this, but I just want to say it out loud. In the light industrial district, you can have the full range of commercial uses that are allowed in more restricted areas of the county. And so we were thinking that this, as an employment area of a mixed-use area, should have some opportunity to have some technical-oriented jobs, and that's why we kept the light industrial, we chose the light industrial zoning. We want to have some real employment opportunities within the buildings that are there. Again, we intended that all of that activity would incur inside of the building, we're not talking about truck traffic or, you know, heavy manufacturing of any type, it would just be maybe computer assembly or something more of that nature. And then also, we wanted to have the benefit of having the village center commercial uses because we think those would be convenient uses that would serve the residents of this community. So we have a broad range of uses, the applicant here is keenly interested in what goes on those properties, they don't want to have anything go on those properties that are going to negatively affect the sales of homes there or the satisfaction of the home buyers there. So we share that interest, and we need to, we want to work more with the county staff and figure out how we strike the right balance so that we can have the opportunity for some real employment in those buildings, maybe some people can walk to work. And we also want to have village center types of services for the enjoyment of people who want to go for ice cream in the afternoon or have coffee in the morning. You saw up there also in gold, we were told that it might be a good idea to not have data centers on those parcels. So the applicant is willing to proffer that there will not be a data center on either of those light industrial properties. I put in bold here the age-restricted, single-family dwelling detached as being one of the four dwelling two-unit types that are proposed. We have the single-family detached that'll just be strictly market, which is what we discussed with you at work session. We have the age-restricted element now that we're going to add. We have single-family attached, also known as townhouses. And of those single-family attached units, some of those will be age-targeted with respect to the marketing by the builder. And the idea is to provide homes that are appealing to older people who may not want to climb the stairs, have some, you know, ground-level primary bedrooms and things of that nature, but have the upstairs still available for when the kids and the grandchildren come to visit. That particular market, we're thinking should be interspersed within the townhome community. We think that sometimes if you have a strict age restriction, especially in townhouses, you create pockets of areas that are not very diverse, and so it is probably desirable to have more diversification, especially within the townhouse area. So that's why we're keeping that as age-targeted as opposed to making it age-restricted. The applicant is very interested in the housing demand issues. As you've probably heard, nationwide, we have a housing crisis. I hate to say the word crisis because I always feel like I'm causing, you know, a lot of drama, but it is used very commonly now in conversations about housing demand across the country and particularly in urbanizing areas and in suburban areas. The difficulty has a lot to do, most economists will agree, on the housing supply, and the housing supply is just not adequate to meet the demand. When that happens, you know, supply and demand, prices go up to whatever the market can bear. And what happens is, as you see from this slide, Ryan Holmes is offering a hometown heroes program where they will help effectively county employees and public health employees, first responders, and to help them get into a home. They can work this, this calculation at 1,823 per month was done when the interest rate was roughly three-quarters to a whole percent higher than it is today, so that number, when we recalculate it, will probably come down a little bit, but it will be subject to interest rates. We looked at the median household income in Culpeper County and saw that it's around $94,000, and so if you take one-third of that, which is what HUD uses to determine the amount that you can afford without being house-burdened or mortgage-burdened, comes to about $2,300 per month. So this is well below what the median household income is in Culpeper in terms of affordability, about $500 lower, and we think that this program could help people to get homes within the county who are either downsizing, who are already in the county, people who are living in the county and can't afford to live in the county anymore, if they're looking to places further out in the rural area. And when that starts to happen, you just see more and more traffic on the road. So there's a benefit in trying to find and provide for the housing needs for people who are employed in the county, you know, right here in the county. So first, they're close, they're our first responders, we want them to be conveniently located, but we also, it reduces the number of rain miles traveled every year. And so the urban sprawl that results otherwise with people having to commute long distances to get to work has a double effect on us, it makes it harder for them to be as productive as they might be if they were living closer to work, but it also prevents our roads from being as efficient and productive as they could be. We've taken a look at the homes that Ryan is building in the area. The number changes every month because they're building new homes, but we see that 25% to 40% of the homes that are being built are being purchased by people in Culpeper County. Now, 40% admittedly is a high, but 20, it seems to be pretty steady at a minimum of 25%. When we look at the number, the people of that 25% who are from Culpeper County and moving to a Ryan community here in Culpeper County, they are also employed, 28% of them are employed in Vaucier County. So it's not people who are still commuting outside of the county for employment. And we want to analyze, but have not yet, the people who are moving to these homes from the neighboring counties. We see that many people from Orange, Louisa, Rapidan, Madison are also buying homes in Culpeper. So it's not all, I've heard some concern about people coming from Northern Virginia to live here. It's not all that type of migration, but as the population grows around the Washington metropolitan area and the employment, what is really happening is the employment centers are moving further and further away from the historic population center in Washington, you see, it's coming out to, a number of the people that we see are employed in Prince William County. So that's not that far away. So the employment centers have moved from being the Pentagon and federal triangle to being much further out, outside the Beltway, and so that's why, one of the reasons that you see growth in Culpeper. But with that growth, having been here for a very long time, I can tell you that the quality of life has improved, too. The commercial strip on Brandy Road has just about every kind of retail service that you could want. We have the university medical centers that are coming here, and that's a benefit of having some increased population growth and having some increased disposable income in the county. The non-industrial areas, the non-residential areas that I mentioned before, this is a list of all of the things that we are excluding from those areas already, and as I said, we're going to add adult business, we're going to add data centers, and we're going to add outdoor activities. Already, we're restricting contractors, equipment, storage yards, but any sort of manufacturing and assembly that would involve any sort of outdoor activity would be, or noisy activities would be added to this list. I did not catch that I put tattoo parlor, I took tattoo parlor out of these restrictions after our last work session, it was pointed out to me that that was an old-fashioned way of thinking about tattoo parlors, and I have to agree. Transportation-wise, I have the internal transportation network that's proposed, this outlines the road system for the site itself, it also shows some of the entrance locations, or shows the entrance locations. It shows along the bottom, along Knolls Mill Road, it has a pedestrian trail. One of the things that the gap analysis and the comprehensive plan asks for is to have better pedestrian access, and so we had added an eight-foot-wide trail along Knolls Mill Road, all the way down to the, roughly to the entrance, labeled here as Road B. And at that point, we started to depart from the road alignment, because if you're familiar with Knolls Mill Road, you know the topography is pretty varied, and so putting the trail along the road was not practical there. It would require a great deal of earth disturbance, very significant environmental impact, and so the road you see starts to meander, it is following topography and departs a little bit from the road. The trail is going up and across the floodplain, it would be owned by the Homeowners Association, and the staff report, they noted that it should be 10 feet wide instead of eight feet wide, and it will be changed to 10-foot width because, you know, we want to do what the standards are looking for in the plan. It also asked who would be maintaining that part of the trail that is not within the public right-of-way, and so we went to confirm also in the revised proffers that it will be the Homeowners Association. But it does become a part of the network of homeowners' trails that are throughout the community. You can see the environmental area, the stream that is going, the perennial stream that goes north-south through the property, we've located a natural trail along that area. We envision that as having interpretive markers that would identify different types of trees, different types of vegetation that are in the area, and tell a little bit of the history of Culpeper. I can see an old piece of farm equipment being there. I, you know, I could see an old piece of farm of equip, farm equipment being there and having a sign next to it that would explain what it is. That, that could be very interesting to people. With respect to the transportation impact analysis, five different scenarios were a part of the assessment. There is the existing conditions in 2023 without any development of this property. The future conditions in 2028 without development of this property. And that's a standard that sets a baseline that VDOT requires as we do traffic impact analyses. And then it did future and out, future conditions in 2034, also without, without the proposed development. And then we come back and we do those analyses again, adding in the traffic that is coming from this site. And one of the interesting things that we found is at the intersection of Rogers Road and Bragg's Corner Way, this, this proposal in 2034 will contribute no more than twenty-five percent, probably less, especially now that we're proposing age restricted. Twenty-five percent of the traffic that would be passing through that intersection. So the applicant is proffering that they will provide, prepare the design work for signalizing that intersection. So work at an accessible, at the appropriate levels of service through 2034. So before they submit their first site plan, or concurrent with that first site plan, they will submit the plans for improving that intersection for VDOT and the county to review and approve. And by the eighty-first housing unit, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy of the eighty-first housing unit, they will complete those improvements. And so the applicant is making a very substantial effort toward improving that intersection. And the great majority of the impact on that intersection is already there with existing traffic that is here in the county or will come from other development and growth in the county. The following intersections were included to be included in the, required to be included in the scoping for the traffic impact analysis. The, the reason I, I'm listing these here is the, the intersections in the, in the town that were raised as concerns in the towns comments were not a part of the scoping. The meeting was held with VDOT, with county staff and with a member of the town of Culpeper present. And at the end of that, that scoping meeting, this meeting is when the, the traffic consultant gets together with the, the staff that I just mentioned. And they decide which intersections are most impacted and should be, should be included in the traffic study. Some of those intersections that were raised as being of concern by the town simply were not included in that meeting. And that's why they were left out of the, the traffic impact analysis. However, we do have good data on that, and much of that has been now provided by the town. The town, we understand, has applied for a smart scale project to provide, to construct roundabouts on Brandy Road at two intersections. And there's also a, what's called a STARS analysis that was done by VDOT that is addressing Brandy Road. And that's a strategic review of the existing conditions and an analysis of what might be done to improve traffic flow on that portion of the road. It's a very vibrant commercial corridor, as I already mentioned, but with that vibrancy comes traffic. And I'm sure you've all experienced that traffic. So we will have more information about those intersections and those, those concerns that were raised by the town when we come back to you. The traffic study required a couple of things that you might not normally expect. The, there was that roundabout idea that was floated. And so the applicant did an analysis of two different roundabout types of designs. They call it a, I'm forgetting, innovative, innovative intersection analysis. So these analyses included the conventional signalized intersection, a roundabout with two lanes to one, a roundabout with a single lane, a bowtie intersection, it's effectively roundabouts separated at two ends, and a restricted U-turn. Of the, of these different types of intersections, the, the roundabout would perform the best over the next thirty years, but it is simply not achievable by a non-governmental entity. It would require very substantial takings of right of way. There are businesses on two of the four corners today, and there's a residence on the, one of the corners. The, the fourth corner appears to be vacant right now. I know it belongs to someone, but it doesn't seem to have a use on it. And those properties would all be very substantially impacted by a roundabout. And so the, the, the prospect of adding a roundabout there, first, it's very, very expensive. And, and second, it, it does not, the, a traditional conventional intersection with traffic signal will meet the state's level of service standards. It will meet it very well, and it will meet it into the foreseeable future. And so that seems to be the most practical, and it's something that this applicant can help with. They can actually get that built, they can get that done for you. So that is a part of the proffer conditions at this point in time. This just says a lot of what I just said. There's a two point three one million dollar commitment to improvements in the, on the transportation network. This is in the form of a monetary contribution. The, there is language about imminent domain in the proffers that staff had some concern about. It had some unintended consequences the way we drafted it, and we want to fix that. It gave the impression that we would be seeking credits for more than just the, the intersection at Rogers Road and Bragg's Corner Road. The, as I said before, seventy-five percent of the traffic, or actually more than seventy-five percent of the traffic that's moving through that intersection is already, is already going to happen without the development of this proposal. So the applicant is willing to construct those improvements. They will advance getting those completed on behalf of the county. But they would like to get some credit back for that because it, we, the estimates right now are one point one to one point two million dollars to make those improvements. And so what we're going to do is we're going to put into the proffer conditions that if there's a credit, it will be capped at one point five million dollars, making it clear that the balance of the two point three million dollar contribution that's being made through per unit contributions would simply be available to the county to do other transportation improvements. They can use it to put together with grant applications like Smart Scale, they can use it for studies. They can use it to study the, the roundabout and the feasibility and need for a roundabout and, and start acquiring right of way or doing design work that will help put that forward. Because it's really, just like the, the north-south connector that crosses the railroad, that is a long-term project and a, you know, very future need for the county. And it needs to be planned for now, but it is not something that's going to be needed for a while. Oh, also on that slide I have here that it says the intersection improvements will be completed prior to the two hundred and first residential building permit. I, I said a little bit earlier, I want to be sure that you remember, I said it, they're going, we're going to change the proffer to say it will be after the eighty-first certificate of occupancy for homes in the community. All right, I have been talking for more than my intended length of time. I would like to stop now unless you would like me to continue and, and hear your questions and comments, or maybe hear from the public, or however you'd like us to proceed.
Okay, I think, want to open the public hearing, or, and then we can ask all the questions at one time. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we're now to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to respond to this application, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and then come forth and give your full name for the record. That one is open right now. Yes, sir.
My name's Ian Nelson. I just have some questions they mentioned in their presentation about noise and the concern about noise. Well, I would think a fire station would be mighty noisy right behind a fifty-five plus place. I would think something like a childcare center, since there's a school there, or some type of offices similar to a doctor's office, real estate office, small little businesses like near Nathan's Hot Dogs would be a much better fit if they're concerned about noise. Something that doesn't have a lot of traffic to it. And I'm assuming there's only one entrance off of Bragg's Corner, right at, right at Enterprise Way, is that right?
Is it just one, one entrance?
Two entrances.
True. So you can, but you, you have to, and, and a matter of fact, we can explain more of that to you, the staff can afterwards, any questions that you have in details like that. But, but as of right now, you just talk to us and explain to us what your concerns might be.
Well, it's not.
For, yes, okay.
It's not necessarily a big concern, but I, you know, they mentioned.
It's something that you want to know, and if it's not on a, on our board pack, you know, where you can find the information that's put out to the community. If not, you feel free to call the staff and they'll help you with that question, that's for sure.
That's the only comment I have.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Take your time.
They were sitting too long.
I understand that.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Peter McCarskey, I live in the Stevensburg District. And just a little bit of preface on my comments. I was recently retired as a, well, I'm retired now, I was the Virginia Employment Commission manager here in Culpeper and Fredericksburg the last couple of years that I was there. And I have fourteen years of the Culpeper Human Services Board, and I retired as the chair of that. In this, my tenure of about forty years of human services delivery to Culpeper, I had to deal with, you know, issues about, you know, housing, employment, unemployment. Labor, I did a lot of labor market information for companies that were projecting to come into Culpeper or the surrounding counties in PD nine. And with some of the things, and by the way, the very nice presentation, very well put together on this. But I have a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me, and I had read the articles and the information about this project. And one of the things that was not brought out in this, and maybe it was a few pages further on, what is the cost of these residences going to be? An interesting thing that I noticed, the senior citizen project that is at Nails Mill Road and Business twenty-nine fifteen, where the shopping centers are, when that was approved by this commission and by the board of supervisors a couple of years ago, it was projected, they were saying this was going to be three hundred thousand dollars approximately each one. It is now being advertised, it's starting at five hundred thousand dollars. Nobody in Culpeper is making that kind of money. And I can tell you this, as board chair for, and also personnel committee chair for Culpeper Human Services, we do not hire the first person that could afford to live in this community. And that eighteen twenty-three number of, you know, can get into one of these residences. I did a little figuring while I was sitting there listening to this. Eighteen twenty-three, that's approximately four hundred and fifty dollars a week. A person making forty thousand dollars, now that is well above that fifteen dollar an hour, you know, minimum wage thing that's floating around. They're going to take home about six hundred dollars a week. A person making fifty thousand dollars a year, which is the approximate starting salary for a teacher in the area, they're going to take home about seven hundred and forty dollars a week, give or take. And I'm basing this on a seventy-five percent approximately, you know, kind of round figure thing of, you know, your take-home pay. You know, when you get taxes and everything taken out, it could be more, it could be less for some people. That's not sustainable for somebody to be living in one of these things. Also, was mentioned in, in this project about, you know, employment for the, you know, the light industrial and commercial services area. Who can, in those jobs, how many people could afford to live in this community? Stop and think about this. What are the wages that are paid in Culpeper? I know some of y'all, what you do, where you work, and I know what some of the wages are paid there. Also, the, we talked about the projected cost possibly going up. And, you know, the fire station, school. Those people can't afford to live there. Our EMTs in Culpeper County, I doubt could afford to live there. We are very blessed to have a volunteer, very good volunteer fire departments in Culpeper County right now. How much longer will this last without going to pay? I don't know. Okay, going on, you mentioned the schools. And you're possibly given thirty acres for the schools. I know that the county is already talking about a project for an elementary school on Greens Corner Road. Elementary schools, could probably conservatively speaking, that's thirty-five million dollars for an elementary school. Something to think about here. Nails Mill Road, where this is going to feed on to, where this is going to feed on to is very crowded and dangerous down there by, you know, Buffalo Wild Wings and the shopping center. The, there's supposed to be an art cut put in there, compliments of the senior citizen community. That hasn't been started yet, I don't know where it is in the planning stage. And I travel Nails Mill Road and out there Bennett Road and that area on a regular basis. It's kind of busy many times. Okay, they covered a question I had about the light industrial. I was afraid that there might be a, a data center trying to slide in the back door. But that was, that was covered, that wasn't going to happen. And my feeling on this is, we need to get caught up on the schools and the services here in Culpeper County before we go and approve another mega community like was being proposed here. And, you know, the, the data centers that are proposed here, the only ones that are being built right now are the Amazon Data Center on Route Three. I don't think there's been a shovel turned on our technology zone. And they might be, I don't know if they're planning it or waiting to go and flip the property, but these are things to consider. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to make the comments.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I didn't have my stopwatch on the last time.
So don't put it on now.
I'm going to do this half the way, half the way.
Laura Rogers, Stevensburg District. I have the following comments after reading the better part of this pack, of this package. This housing development will add seventy-nine hundred vehicles per day to these roads. Bragg's Corner Road is currently the number two traveled secondary road with over ten thousand vehicles per day. Add that to the seventy-nine hundred, well, that average weekday traffic would be close to eighteen thousand vehicles per day. Those seventy-nine hundred vehicles per day need someplace to go during the day. So they're going to go to the schools, grocery stores, Lowe's, a place in town to eat lunch, all using the town roads and the county rural roadways. Traveling in Nails Mill Road, Rogers Road and Bragg's Corner Road area, come, will come to a screeching halt before and after school. There have been thirty-five accidents since twenty eighteen at the intersection of Bennett, Rogers and Bragg's Corner Road, with four already this year. Signalizing Bragg's Corner Road will create a standstill of stopped vehicles on both of those feeder roads of Bennett Road and Rogers Road. If a roundabout on Bragg's Corner Road must be built due to this development instead of signalization, then the right of way must be acquired from private landowners, with some of them losing their entrances. An eight-foot walking trail is being proffered from their. An eight-foot walking trail is being proffered from their Road A entrance to the end of Rogers Road, Bragg's Corner Road. Why are we inviting pedestrian traffic to that high-volume intersection and creating such a, a safety hazard? This walking trail will be on property that has to be acquired from private landowners that aren't even a part of this project. Do they even know about this? Because I don't think this is going to be on the right-of-way, which, what they're talking about. Does the community also know that this developer has proffered that if they are unable to attain that right-of-way or any of the land needed for road improvements, they want the county to eminent domain that property and take it from the landowners? I- is that even legal for the county to do for a private business? Um, if there is one child per home, that's an additional seven, seven, seven hundred and seventy kids registering for school. If there are two kids, double that, now you got to build a school. Does a town even have enough water sewer capacity for the seven hundred and seventy home subdivision? When taking into account that three hundred home subdivision up top there by Buffalo Wild Wings and then the millions of square feet of data centers that are already approved. Is there enough electric, electricity capacity to serve all of these projects as well? So finally, when considering this rezoning, just ask yourself, how is this rezoning going to benefit Culpeper? Will this rezoning contribute to the health, safety and welfare for all the citizens in Culpeper? What is the county's mission to its citizens? To have housing developers dictate what, where, and how many homes should be built? To create more congestion? To place additional burdens on public safety? To increase our taxes because now we have to build more schools? MVR should be ashamed to submit this application. It is not in character with the citizens' desires of slowing growth and maintaining the very rural farmland we say that we hold near and dear. Culpeper citizens are not interested in another dense, out-of-area corporate housing development that will completely change every aspect of our quality of life in Culpeper. Please deny this tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Scott Mitchell. Um, I live on Naws Mill Road. And I am a terrible public speaker.
Take your time.
I share a property line with the Armstrong property from the center of Mountain Run all the way to the railroad. A distance probably a half to three-quarters of a mile at least. I would first of all like to say that tonight was the first time that I saw a map with that proposed road cutting my property in half. And I do not appreciate finding out about that here tonight. That is unacceptable. My wife and I will probably be more impacted by y'all's decision on this development than anyone else in the county. And while we were shocked and disappointed when we first heard about it, we understand that we have no control over what other people decide to do with their property. Development is a disadvantage of living so close to town. But just as much as it is the Armstrong's right to develop their land, it is just as much our right to preserve ours. The house that I just built on our family farm for my wife and I will be the only house built there. Regardless of any comprehensive plan, I will not sell our family land to a developer. Dwayne Payne and his father will continue to cut hay there just as they have been doing for over forty years. We will continue spreading bio solids, including chicken litter. We will hunt on our land. And my son and his buddies are still come over and use the shooting range on the northeast corner of our property every weekend. We will not change our way of life to accommodate seven hundred and seventy neighbors that we don't want. And we are well within our rights to do this. I'm sorry. In that light, should this plan be approved, we will there, therefore ask the county to insist that the one-hundred-year-old fence road of trees remain intact and that other measures are taken to ensure that a large natural barrier exists between the properties for their benefit as much as ours. And I would like again for someone to explain to me the two roads that are starting and stopping at my property line. At no time has anyone approached me about any roads. I don't understand why someone would assume that I would allow any access between the properties because that will not happen. The Mitchell family respectfully request that the planning commission deny this application outright. But if approved, we ask you to insp- insist that all parties involved respect not only our land, but our privacy. Thank you.
And you say you're not a public speaker? Anyone else?
Good evening, Sarah Parmley, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. Uh, we, um, we concur with the many concerns that have been raised about this rezoning. Um, we are typically supportive of infill in lieu of rural sprawl, but, um, there are just too many concerns about this project in its current state. Um, we would especially like to note, uh, that as the planning commission heard in September, there are, are organizations that are actively looking to create additional affordable housing in Culpeper. And we are disappointed that a seven hundred-plus home development, um, only includes a, an illusion to, of only illusion to affordable housing is essentially a stipend to help a handful of, um, homeowners with closing costs. Um, if the, if the developer is intent on moving forward, we would encourage them, uh, to reach out to some of these organizations such as People Inc. or Habitat of, Habitat for Humanity. Um, and include meaningful language actually creating affordable housing as part of this development. Um, and that the planning commission not recommend approval of this development until such language has been added to the proffers. Um, we are also, um, uh, deeply troubled by the applicant's proposal that his neighbor's land and their ability to live and farm that land should be compromised to solve the problem created by this development. We hope that the applicant will use, um, the delay that they have asked for to find a way to mitigate their impacts without taking land from Culpeper's farmers. Um, and even if that means reducing the size of this proposed development. Thank you very much. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
Dwayne Payne, Stevensburg District. I'll keep it quick. Um, mostly here tonight to support Scott Mitchell. He's given us a great honor for four decades to farm his land. And whatever the result of tonight will be, we'll continue to farm his land for him. Um, as for the applicant, um, or the application, it's really simple. Um, we already have a lot of by right residential in the books in Culpeper County. Um, our infrastructure is already stressed, our tax base is already stressed. There is no need at this time to increase density, um, in Culpeper County. So I know you guys have made a lot of hard decisions over the past few months and you have many more to come. Um, and they're all connected. So, um, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? The gentleman in the back.
Good evening. Don Haight, Stevensburg. I've been speaking at these meetings for about five years with the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. But this is the first time I have seen a developer so arrogant that they feel that they can just take people's property. This is the craziest thing I have ever seen. I, I don't even have to read my speech tonight. I can just sit here and talk about how arrogant a developer is to come in here and think that they can just come and do whatever they want to a person who has been here for I don't know how many years in his family. My heart goes out to him. I, 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 I can't believe he was able to control himself. If that had been me, it would have been a lot different. This is a prime example of what happens when an out-of-town developer comes in here and just think they can do whatever they want, however they want, whenever they want. And he even put it in the, in his application, eminent domain. He already told you what he's going to do. He's going to come in here and just take your property. They don't care because they don't live here. They have, they are not invested in this county. They don't go to church in this county. Their kids don't go to school in this county. They don't care. Culpeper is just a cash cow. They come here and make as much money as they can, as fast as they can, and they leave. Can you imagine if somebody, if that had been your piece of property up there? Think about this. If this had been, you came here tonight and you saw where a developer was going to use your property as part of the application. Just think about that for a second. I want to thank the staff for, for making the proper evaluation about this application to that, tonight. Low-income housing, don't be fooled by the buzzword. It's just a tagline that they use that has no meaning. What the price, what is the price of a house for a married couple? What is the price of a house for a family of four? Give me those numbers. It's just the one and, another one of those government subsidized programs wasting our tax money via, via the income tax credits. Low-income housing puts a larger burden on the county by increasing the overall population, which in turn increases school enrollment and the need for more schools, more fire and rescue, and a larger impact on the roads. We already need more schools, more fire and rescue, and, and we also need to have our roads fixed. Residents from Culpeper County, you need to wake up. Our hospital is too small already. We, we have more people than our infrastructure can handle. If the ben- builder loves Culpeper, then build less homes and increase your proffers. They are only here, like I said earlier, to make as much money as they can. The Culpeper County, Culpeper Hospital can barely serve the volume of people that we have now. If you want proper healthcare, where do you go? We all go to Charlottesville. We all know it. Increase proffers, not density. Affordable housing means that my tax-paying dollars are spent to fund the builder while I'm struggling to afford my own home. I want my tax-paying dollars to go towards paying for my house, not padding the pocket of builders. The builder should come here tonight to increase their proffers, not to increase the density, which increases the burden on Culpeper residents. Culpeper isn't responsible for providing housing for the rest of the state. Deny, deny this project and save Culpeper for our children. And I simp, I'm going to close with this once again. I simply cannot believe a builder was so arrogant to having the application, the acquisition of another person's, person's property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Being on a, um, at this time, um, that's right, we won't be closing the, um, um, public hearing, but we do have to, vote to reopen it at the, um, um, after whatever we decide to do, um, here as we progress, so. We've heard the comments and, um, staff, I don't know if there's anything that you want to say now, but.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, commissioners, um, any questions that you have? Now's the time to. Yeah, Mr. Price, we'll start on that end.
Question for, for the applicant. Um, sir, your materials indicated that the first year you'd build a hundred and twenty-five units and then each subsequent year you'd build up to a hundred and fifty, which means it would take five to six years for the full build-out of the seven hundred and seventy units.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, but there was a statement in the executive summary of the traffic impact analysis that said it would all be built by two thousand and twenty-eight, which is of course much more rapid build-out time. So, so the two thousand and thirty or thirty-one would be the actual target for a full build-out.
So the traffic impact analysis was prepared based on the scoping that I mentioned at the very beginning of the process, actually before we, uh, had made this middle of the application. In the second, uh, review, staff asked us to provide a phasing program and that's when the hundred and fifty and a hundred, or a hundred and twenty-five, then a hundred and fifty units per year came into play. So that's the reason for the inconsistency between the, the two items. Um, the transfer, the traffic impact analysis was prepared, prepared first. Staff asked us to phase the development so that it would come in more slowly, so that public infrastructure would have a better opportunity to keep pace. Uh, and, and so that came later.
All right, so about five or six years before the full build-out then.
Yes, sir.
Of all units. Yes, um, speaking of the, uh, the TIA, now you've got a third of your housing units age restricted. And you're still waiting on V dot comments for the traffic impact analysis that was already submitted. Does V dot know that you've, uh, converted, uh, about a third of your housing to, uh, age restricted? I mean, that would have an impact on a number of trips in and out.
Sure, it will reduce the impact. Uh, no, V dot is not aware of that. That decision was made on, on Monday, quite frankly, of this week, after the staff report was reviewed by the applicant.
Yeah, because I would say whatever comments that V dot would bring in now would be, would be moot. I mean, they wouldn't apply to what the new situation.
Well, our, our presumption is, is that we've addressed all of their concerns based on the higher number of dwelling units, the higher traffic generators. Uh, and that our new, uh, traffic generation will only make it better, whatever their recommendation is.
Okay, so, and then on the streets, um, on the graphic, Naws Mill Road, Rogers Road look like they have nice, long, straight stretches. If you're on the road though, they're, they, they don't seem that way. They're windy and curvier than they appear on the map. And seven thousand or so, uh, additional vehicle trips in and out, uh, of the development a, a day um, would be a lot to put on that road. Now, I noticed you've proffered turn lanes, right and left-hand turn rates for both the entrances, one on Rogers Road and one on Bragg's, uh, on Naws Mill Road, I recall.
Yes, sir, that's correct. May I go back to the, uh, a sort of drawing that was shown earlier?
Because the point I'm getting to is, would you proffer additional improvements to Naws Mill Rogers Road to widen, level, straighten? Uh, to make it, uh, safer for all the vehicles that are now going to be on that road?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we did look at as we were analyzing this property is that the operating speed, um, of Naws Mill Road is quite in, in excess of what I think anyone in this room would agree is appropriate. Uh, the speed limit for Naws Mill Road is fifty-five miles per hour. The winding ditch section street that you described and that I've, you've experienced and I've experienced, it's very curvy, has a lot of vertical brakes as well. Um, really, the speed limit needs to be reduced. That's not because of us. That's just pure common sense, uh, with regard to safety on this road. And if I could go just one step further, if you'll indulge me. Um, there was a comment about the intersection of Rogers Road and, and Bragg's Corner Road having a number of accidents. We have taken account of all of the traffic accident reports, uh, at that intersection. It's part of our TIA report. Uh, there are more accidents there than there should be, given the volume of traffic that is going through there, and it's because the traff, the, there isn't a signal there. Uh, it is a dangerous situation. I shouldn't say dangerous. It is not a good situation now. A good driver can navigate it safely. Uh, however, people become impatient because they're having to wait. There's a long delay to, to make a left turn coming out of, um, uh, Rogers Road and, and Bennett Street that's right across the street from it. And so what people do when they become impatient is they charge and, and then you have the angular accidents that we see a large, uh, a number of accidents. It's not, it's not huge, uh, but it, it is higher than what it should be.
Okay, um, and the question of price point for the housing units has come up. So you, any idea what the price points would be for the housing? I mean, they all seem to be either, either single-family, either detached or attached, but, I mean, very similar types of housing. So any idea what the price range is?
It, it is always difficult to answer this question. I'm not skirting it because I'm going to give you an answer at the end, but I want to tell you why it's difficult. Because as someone already pointed out, they heard a price point mentioned at a public hearing, I don't know how many years ago, of three hundred thousand. And now those homes are selling for five hundred thousand. The economy, uh, the availability of housing, supply and demand, all of those variables go into it. What we're expecting now is three hundred to five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, uh, for the townhomes, or five hundred thousand. Is that accurate? Yeah, so something in that range, but the, the overall economy will affect the price of that home. And I would hate for someone to leave here and come back in two years and tell you that we did, we didn't give the right number, that the number's higher. It, it does go up.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge, I got a couple of quick things for, uh, for staff. So, um, Sam, is there anywhere in the plans, um, widening, straightening, or leveling out Knolls Mill Road or Rogers Road in, along the segment where it fronts this property?
No, there are no current plans, uh, to, to widen or straighten, uh, many sections of Knolls Mill Road. It is identified as a V trans need, um, corridor to, to look at, but it would need to be studied further, but there are no current plans to do that.
All right. If we wanted to, um, lower the speed limit to 45 miles an hour through there, is that a county decision, is that a V dot decision?
That's a V dot decision, and the county's tried a couple of times unsuccessfully, um, to lower the speed limit, especially the section that goes into town near the bridge for the rail crossing, um, but we have not been successful in getting that lowered yet.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
So, with this new recent addition of putting some type of a school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school right beside, uh, the railroad tracks, um, those traffic counts clearly were not included in your TIA, correct?
The traffic counts for the school?
Yeah.
No, they were not.
Okay, so the TIA basically going forward with your proposal is irrelevant at this point because it doesn't account for all that additional traffic.
No, ma'am, I would not say it's irrelevant in the least. Um, there, it does need to be an adjustment to it to account for the school, uh, trip generation, and with schools, it's not that they generate that much traffic, it's that they generate it at a very specific time of day. Uh, so the, the concentration...
You also have after hours uses, just like it's done at the high schools.
They do, but the after hours impact is not generally that big, except at a high school. Uh, the real, uh, the real impacts are in the morning and then at three o'clock. Three o'clock is, tends to be off-peak, so you're not having, uh, all of the same conflicts. But in the morning, uh, that is something that we'd want to take...
But you have no idea what the school is gonna be?
Uh, an elementary school is what we understand, uh, would be appropriate for the area. We've sized it for an elementary school, and the layout that you see is for an elementary.
Okay, and our elementary schools commonly get used after hours for different things as well? You've talked about having recreation things within that community as well, so is that gonna be open, um, you know, where you're gonna have soccer practices or whatever, and those that are gonna be extra trips as well?
Yes, they are, and it was already planned for a recreation site, so those trips would already be captured in the TIA. Uh, but for the, the, the peak hour that you mentioned, uh, the morning arrival for school, uh, that is something that we'd want to give, uh, get factored in.
And then your proffers here, reading through them, you've proffered money to organizations that the way that you list them by name don't even exist. So, I suggest you do your homework on that and make sure you've done all your naming correctly.
Did we misname the Carter Food Services organization?
No.
Okay, we'll, we will correct that, absolutely.
Okay, I had a, a few questions. So, a couple of things, um, maybe for Sam. So, did they actually do, did V dot actually do a speed study for the, for the mile per hour change, or did they just look at it?
It's been a couple of years, but there was, there was a speed study done.
Okay. And then for the roundabout, uh, uh, in terms of the smart scale application, where do we stand on that?
Which roundabout are you referring to? We have multiple right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What I'm talking about is the one at Bragg's Corner.
There is no smart scale application.
There is, we have not submitted anything, we've not done.
The town, uh, has one that's currently being, well, not constructed. Utilities are still being relocated at Route 3 in McDevitt. Uh, that one's well underway. The county has applied for one at 229 and Ira Hoffman on the other end of town.
Yeah.
And then the town has recently applied for, I believe, two roundabout projects, uh, one at Walmart, um, and one at Ira Hoffman on Business 29. Um, if those are successful, those wouldn't be until six or seven years from now, uh, to be constructed. But right now, at Bragg's Corner and Ri, or Rogers Road, excuse me, in Bragg's Corner, there's no application, uh, for any funding.
Was there a valuation for costs associated with the roundabout? An estimated, uh, cost?
No, but, you know, based on the, the area character for that particular roundabout, we've seen a great increase in the costs, uh, for transportation projects in general, including roundabouts. Um, the Ira Hoffman one, um, at 229, we're looking at about a, a $20 million estimate for that proj, project, so.
Um, so, I guess back to the question about the roundabout that we were, we were talking about here. In terms of the, uh, study, um, it was looked at, but it was determined that there was a lot of, um, uh, land that was gonna need to be acquired right away and such to do that. And, um, as I understand it, um, and I think there were some questions about eminent domain and condemnation and things like that. A private developer cannot seek, uh, condemnation. It would have to be the jurisdiction that would actually do that.
Yes, sir.
So, I don't think the application's proposing eminent domain because you don't have the right to do, uh, development on somebody else's land. And I think that was the gentleman's question here, where it may show it on a plan, but you'd have to get permission from that owner before that could ever happen, uh, to go through somebody's land or take right away. So, I just wanted to clarify that out. Um, and then in terms of the roundabout and the signal, was there a full signal justification report completed?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay, and that showed that definitely that it would improve the level of service at that intersection?
Yes, sir, that does.
Okay. And then, um, was there a corridor study, uh, and a VSIM model done, associated with the congestion at, at the intersection?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, just trying to check off a couple of things there. And then, as part of the, uh, I think Mr. Price mentioned it, um, would the app can be mil, be willing to do full frontage improvements across the whole frontage of the site?
I think that...
As opposed to just turn lanes?
Yeah, I, I think that we, we can, we can give additional study to that and, and come back to answer that. The grades there are pretty substantial, as I mentioned before. Uh, there is also the cut, uh, where the property is on both sides of the road. Uh, I think there might, there may be some substantial, uh, expense associated with that, and our entrances are located in such a way that the majority of the traffic splits, as you know, are not, not traveling that part of the road.
I guess I'm just thinking about, uh, future costs for future potential development, uh, and as well as the, uh, roundabout, um, as Sam mentioned, you know, there's a huge cost for putting the roundabouts, and it includes the PE services, as well as the land acquisition, as well as the, the actual construction. Um, so, you know, even if you put the signal in, you might want to consider additional contribution toward a future roundabout. $50,000 wouldn't be, uh, close to what would be needed in terms of a contribution.
Yes, sir, it's the, um, the monetary contribution that the applicant is proposing is ten, 2.8 million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's based on a per unit basis, uh, 3,584 per unit. Uh, we are, we're anticipating that the intersection improvements will cost on the order of one to 1.2 million dollars.
For a roundabout?
For, no, just for the intersection.
Yeah, I'm talking about a roundabout.
But for the signalized intersection, and what I'm getting to is, there's 1.6 million dollars left.
Okay.
And the applicant is doing the, all of the full, the frontage improvements necessary to meet all the entrance requirements, site distances and great vertical and horizontal site distances, uh, and also road widening at the entrances. And so they're already doing considerable improvements to Knolls Mill, but there's 1.68 million dollars that we would hope that the county would take and would use for some, some very significant transportation planning in this area, because obviously it's needed and it's something that's wanted. Uh, the improvement to Knolls Mill Road, the roundabout, the railroad crossing, there's quite a bit of work to be done that just hasn't even been initiated yet, uh, and it will be initiated by the county eventually, or V dot eventually. Uh, there was a citizen here who spoke that, about seeing a road divide his property. I really apologize for that. I would hate for anyone to learn, I would hate myself to learn something like that, um, at a meeting like this. We're not proposing that road. That road was proposed by the county, and it was proposed, I don't know, five years ago when the gap plan was prepared? That's, that's not our, our analysis, but I do have empathy for him finding out this, this way this evening.
Okay. Um, and then I guess as far as the affordable housing, uh, in, uh, the 1823, was that for the single-family detached or single-family attached unit that was listed, the 1823 dollars?
That, that would be single-family attached. That would be town, the townhomes.
And have you considered doing, uh, two levels of a townhouse, suppose three levels, to reduce the cost, to make it more affordable for people? I know they do that in Fairfax and other jurisdictions.
There, we have not, uh, we've not gotten into that, uh, type of analysis.
Two-story?
Yeah, yeah, so what, what has been done so far has been three-level.
Right.
Uh, and you've asked if we would reduce it to two levels?
If you would consider two levels, because then it makes it usually affordable.
We can, we can do some more analysis of that. We're trying to keep the neighborhood, uh, consistent and coherent, at the same time as, and we're trying to provide diversity, so it's a balance.
Yeah, a lot of times it's more of a percentage, like, you know, you might have, let's say, 100, three-story townhouses, but maybe you have 50 two-story townhouses, or some mix thereof to think about.
I understand.
Um, and then as far as the traffic study, the, the, the years that were being evaluated for the build condition, that was scoped with V dot, I assume?
Yes, sir.
A lot of the ones that we're seeing more currently is the 2045 evaluation for traffic and for build conditions. So, um, we'll see what V dot comes back with, but I guess for more of a long-term perspective and seeing what the improvements are, we may want to lengthen the actual term of what the evaluation is for the TIA.
We, we can, I've not heard of that. Um, V dot does have specific criteria for the, uh, the scope, the term of the analysis. I've not heard of 200, uh, for 2045, but I, I will find out.
Yeah, it's just, um, something to, to look at.
Okay.
And then, as part of the, um, the age restricted component, uh, which is 55 and over, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does that allow for teenagers and other folks? Is it, because a lot of times, age restricted still has, like, on average, the people in those, that development has to be 55 and older, but you could still have, uh, residents that are in that house that are younger than 55. Is that correct? Or how is the documents written for that?
So, the, uh, we have to follow the, the federal housing, uh, standards. Uh, they do allow for residents, uh, who are over 18 years, I think you're right, there's an average. They, they do allow for, for a resident over 18 years of age and presumably therefore is outside of the public school period. And they allow for a spouse or a widow, uh, that may be under 55 to, to continue to live in the house if this, if the, uh, primary resident, the, who's fit, who qualified for the 55 age limit, uh, is there. I, we will, um, we have not pulled up those standards and looked at them recently, but we really, um, have very little choice in how that, uh, how we can draft that. The federal government, we have to do it specifically as they tell us that we can, or else we're doing age discrimination.
Right.
Um, and, and I will have that information for you, so that you can see specifically what those are.
Yeah, mostly trying to tie that back into the TIA in terms of how you evaluating traffic, if there are other people that are gonna be using it, that you're gonna have more people in the household that are gonna generate more traffic, you know, let's say, from that perspective. Um, I'm gonna stop at this point.
Thank you.
I'm ready. Um, could you clarify for me, is the school site on property that you have under contract?
Yes, sir, we now have that under contract.
Okay, so, so that, there, the, the gentleman's question is about the future railroad crossing encroaching on the other landowner, not the school site?
If you look at the school site on the screen, um, if, let me, do you mind if I go back to the?
Go right ahead.
Slide that shows. So, here's the, um, the, the gap analysis alignments, and, um, you can see where the school site is located. You see the extension of, uh, Enterprise Way, uh, going, uh, parallel to the railroad, and then intersecting with the connection between Kaiser Road and Hoffman Lane. The, um, lost my train of thought, what?
So, so I ju, I just wanted to be clear that, that you didn't have a whole school site on another man's property?
Oh, no, sir, yes.
That it's part of the part you have under contract?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It, it is part of a tract of land that the applicant has, uh, agreed to purchase.
Fellow commissioner said, I'm interested too, to understand, um, how a site would affect your, your traffic interaction, you know, at all hours. That seems like a lot of traffic, and similarly, what kind of interaction have you had with any local fire and EMS to see if that firehouse site would be acceptable based on its location? Would they pick it for a functional place, especially based on that railroad crossing just down the way?
Yes, sir, it gives, you're right. I mean, the railroad crossing becomes an issue, but the railroad, the fire station on the other side of the railroad crossing causes an issue as well. That's why it'd be good to be located on both sides of the rail crossing, particularly adjacent to, uh, James Madison Highway. Most, any fire department that is running accident calls is, is, or running calls, is running more accidents than fires. Uh, and so with the high volume of traffic that's on James Madison Highway and, and on the south side of the railroad, it only makes sense to have a fire station on this side. But to answer your question directly about whether we've had conversations with that group, and the, the answer is yes. Um, they, they were a little bit, uh, concerned about the fire station site that they're seeking on the north side of the railroad and this competing with it, and that's why I was careful in my comments to say that we're not intending that this would compete with it. We just think it's a very good location within the public, the urban service area, uh, to have that type of facility to serve the surrounding properties, uh, both industrial and, and residential, as well as the highway.
Uh, my next question would be about the light industrial triangle on the eastern side of the property. I notice you, you remove truck terminal, but do you, uh, remove warehouse distribution? So, I'm just curious if we would end up with, with a high-traffic business that needs high traffic?
It is not our intention to have that kind of business. That is one of the things that we want to talk with staff about more. Uh, we, uh, we want to be sure that we're excluding the types of business that you're most concerned about, uh, while still providing for some employment uses in that facility. We are well aware that we are right next door to truck terminals and warehouses, um, and, uh, and we, we see the traffic that goes in and out of there. Um, so, we, we know, uh, a little bit about what happens, uh, if you don't have some sort of controls or limitations on a property like this.
Um, my next question would be, uh, in any of your past projects throughout the Northern Virginia region that may be adjacent to a data center campus, do you ever react to that or build at greater distances? Uh, that leads me to the question of these homes right here at entrance, uh, right across from the new, it's approved, but of course it hadn't been started. I'm just curious how far those houses are from those data centers, um, future noise? Uh, I'm curious about how a future neighbor, as neighbors, how does that play out? And, and are you concerned?
We, we are not concerned, um, and, and part of the reason is because of the planning of the site. Uh, so, obviously, the, the developer is building residence, and, and if they can't build, they can't sell the homes, uh, that would be of grave concern to them, um, and they are aware of the data center project, and they have tracked that it through, as they went through the process. If you look at the, uh, the slide that I've turned to, it's on the screen, there is a, it reminded me that Mr. Smith's mentioned, uh, that he was hoping that there would be a substantial buffer against this property, and I wanted to, Mr. Mitchell, uh, I wanted to be sure to point out that there's a 100-foot wide buffer adjacent to his property along the boundary of this property, and you can see it here in, in dark green. Uh, it does anticipate preserving the existing trees along that property boundary. We don't want to impinge on his peaceful enjoyment of his property in any way. Uh, but back to the data center question, if you look along the southern boundary here, the, the homes have been held back away from the property line, so you can see that, uh, there's stormwater management features. There's also a, a buffer, uh, along Knolls Mill Road and along, um, Rogers Road, and that's where Rogers Road begins, where it departs from, where the old alignment of Knolls Mill Road at what is now Marathon Road intersection. So, um, that has been what, to answer your question, the data centers have been taken into consideration. Uh, they are not concerned that they are going to have a diminished effect, diminishing effect on the value of the homes that they would sell here, uh, and that, um, they have concluded in a design screening and buffering, uh, that they believe will be more than adequate to address that concern.
Okay, and, and I guess my last comment today will be general, in that, in our comp plan, and this is such a significant number of houses, we have this future idea of, of alternative transportation, bicycles, walkability, access to shopping, and I guess, I'm not ready to give up on that idea. I guess people won't be walking to Walmart on this, but I am clinging to the idea that whatever intersection could be maybe improved, uh, in front at Bragg's Corner, uh, and 666. I'm, I'm just curious, could schoolchildren ever walk safely to the high school and future to the high school and future schools across the bridge over twenty-nine? And I, I don't know whether that's a pipe dream or whether there really is a plan through your walking paths and the construction of the intersection and traffic calming features, whether we're not creating more danger funneling pedestrians to that intersection or whether there's, there's a way to do our best for that to occur.
Yes, sir. The, the intersection design will include pedestrian signals and crosswalk analysis. So that will be taken into, to consideration by VDOT and, and by the applicant as they design that intersection. Right now it's hard to imagine because there is no signal there and the traffic coming off of the highway is going quite fast, uh, as you, as you approach the town toward the north. Uh, but the, when they designed that interchange, they did construct a, a shared-use path along the northern side of Bragg's Corner Road, which extends all the way across the bridge and goes all the way over to the rec center, um, and, and to the high, and eventually to the high school on the other side of the road. So we had a little bit of the same concern about, um, the, the pedestrian activity. Uh, I think that you, you know, a parent would want to be very careful about their children using that route. But the applicant has also, uh, proffered to facilitate, uh, bus stops within the site that, because we heard that the, the trolley, uh, was looking to extend its service to go out to the rec center. And so we have in our proffered conditions, a, a trolley stop, or we called it a transit stop because we didn't know if the name trolley would still be the, the favorite name by the time that the property is developed. But we're thinking that possibly the better route to get over to the rec center and to the high school would be used to use transit.
Okay. And, well, that leads me to one more question. Are there, uh, trigger points for, for the actual? I know you mentioned space for those, but do y'all mention the point at which they'd be constructed?
We do not have that specifically, um, stated in the proffer right now. Our anticip-, we have a broad statement that said, that says that as each section is developed, the amenities within that, within that section would be constructed concurrently. Uh, it was pointed out to us that that, you know, that might leave some room for, for misunderstanding or, or disagreement about when something should be built. And we've been asked to go back and tie it more specifically to certain, uh, progress within the development. We haven't talked to staff about what that trigger would be. Uh, but it's fully our intention in the, in the time that we have between now and your next meeting, uh, to, to have that hammered out, uh, more specifically, just as you suggested now.
That's all I have. But thank you.
Okay, sir.
Nate?
Yes. Uh, thank you for your presentation. And I, a couple of questions. I'm looking at Enterprise Way and the access point into there if we build a school, uh, and the way that's buffered now. Uh, are you planning on, I know that you see, you, you have the Knolls Mill and I believe it's, uh, Rogers entrance. Are you adding an entrance on Enterprise Way? I, I see that the old plan had the hook and the baseball field or the, whatever that was. And now it has, um, the school. Because there would need to be an entrance. Then you, you're not going to force buses to drive through your fifty-five-plus neighborhood, so.
So.
What's your plans for that?
What has been, uh, discussed so far is the rough grading and the extension of utilities to the site. We have not gotten so far as to, uh, to discuss the access to the site.
Okay.
Uh, there is a sizable contribution to schools that goes, uh, beyond, uh, the, the dedication of the thirty-acre site. There's four-point-two-two million dollars that would be given to the schools as a part of the per-unit contributions. Uh, and so we think that that can be used, uh, first for the Greens Corner School, uh, but also, uh, for, for site planning and for, uh, uh, other improvements that may come to new, uh, to people's knowledge that need to be done for this site.
Having been a school board member and chairman of the capital planning committee, uh, that four million will, will, won't even, won't even pay the par for the money. But I appreciate the thought. Uh, my next thing here, let me bring up my notes. Oh, um, uh, to the statement that your neighbor had made, um, about taking property or the trails, are you encouraging that? Are you, are you, are you saying that that should happen in order to make this a reality and to tie in walking trails and, and roads? Um, I know he, he was pretty upset and I don't, I know it's not your intent to take it. But what are your thoughts on that? Why, why was that shown tonight when it clearly is over the boundary, right?
You're, you're talking about the alignment?
The alignment, yes.
Of that north-south connector. Um, we're, we brought that up because it is brought up in the staff report.
Okay.
Uh, and, and we were told that we needed to take more, um, to provide more input regarding that alignment. Again, it's not our alignment. It's something that's in the gap analysis. It's something that's referred to in the comprehensive plan. Uh, and so we took the effort this evening to put it on the map and, and to give you a map that shows you how the transportation network, uh, would, would work. Frankly, we think that, uh, it, when and if that road is, uh, connection is made, uh, it will redistribute. It will cause a redistribute, a redistribution of traffic in that area. As you see, Ira Hoffman Drive, you see going to the north, uh, and Kaiser Road, uh, and then McDivitt, uh, to the south. We think that that becomes a much more viable corridor. And when, when that's available, you'll see less traffic on Knolls Mill Road and you'll probably see less traffic on Bragg's Corner Road as well, uh, because it, it will be an easier route, uh, and it will take people to more destinations.
Would, um, building this project here, uh, make that road necessary?
No, sir.
It will not make it. So it has no impact on it?
No.
Okay.
But, but this project would benefit from it once it's built, if it's bought. Again, the traffic will redistribute itself. If you look at Bragg's Corner and Knolls Mill Road today, the alignments are such that you have to meander through, uh, the rural section streets and then you get into the, uh, into the town and you're going through narrower commercial streets. Uh, and then when you get out to Brandy Road, you're teeing, you're teeing into a road that doesn't go north. Uh, i- if you, if, if we had the north-south connector, uh, it would benefit the entire area.
Okay. Thank you for your input on that. Um, I'm looking at, um, that one swath of path there on, next to your trail, next to the, uh, alignment. Um, I don't know if you have a different map you want to zoom into.
I think I have a bigger one.
It shows, like, you go over the flood plan. How, what are your plans on, on filling that gap, literally, no pun intended, to go over the flood plan to run that road where it needs to be?
It would need to be bridged. It'll have to meet the requirements for the floodplain, um, construction within a floodplain.
What kind of houses are going back there? Are we doing townhouses back there? Are we doing attached, detached?
Along the western edge of the property?
Correct.
Uh, no, those would be single-family detached homes.
Detached homes. Okay. Um, looking at that, but what do those dead-end streets go to? Just cul-de-sacs or? I see the one cul-de-sac in the picture, but the other two dead ends don't, they're just dead end.
The Virginia Department of Transportation requires that we show interparcial connections to adjoining properties. Uh, so this is sometimes something that, and a developer is required to do and they have a high level of skepticism as to when and if the road will ever be used.
Right.
Uh, if Mr. Mitchell were to never sell that property, never develop that property, those roads will not be needed. So we did something a little bit different. Uh, we committed to dedicate the roads and rights of way uh, to the property line in the way that VDOT requested. But we said that the homeowners association would retain ownership of those roads. Because what we've seen happen in other developments is as soon as it becomes a VDOT road, anybody can park on it. And, and there's no way you can tell them that they don't have public access. You can't tell them to leave. So by the way that we've done it, the way that we've proffered it, the homeowners association will retain the ownership and that way the homeowners association would be able to block the road, uh, and charge the person with trespass if they were there inappropriately uh, and trying to, you know, use the, the dead-end street. We usually find that those dead-end streets end up being the parking places for commercial equipment and, and RVs.
What, okay. And my final question is, and this sits down, maybe a little too deep in the weeds, but I'd like to know, uh, just rough math, um, seven-hundred homes, two-hundred-thousand dollars profit, a hundred-and-forty-million dollars, you know, that's what this project brings to Ryan Homes. Um, and yet we've got encroachment on our neighbor that hunts, obviously hunts, shoots. We don't, we have, uh, ordinances in Culpeper that, that leave us with if it's a hundred, you know, a hundred yards from a, from a dwelling, there's certain things we can't do. Um, well, how do you address your neighbor? How, how do we, how do we mitigate that? So their style of life is not, um, interrupted by, by y'all's project?
I, I understand. And, and the purpose of planning and zoning is to protect property values. I mean, of, of the very many things that, that, that is, planning and zoning is devised to do, it is to, um, you know, protect the health, safety and welfare. Uh, it is also to, uh, provide, allow communities to provide public services in a measured way. And we've tried to address those issues. Uh, but it, it does, uh, protect the property owners of the adjoining properties. And that is why we have a one-hundred-foot buffer there. You're talking about a hundred-foot discharge. Uh, so we, we have that, uh, separation from that property. Uh, we are not, um, we, we are in an area that is an urban service area. We are in an area that is well-accessed by transportation services, better accessed by transportation services than much, most of the rest of Culpeper County, which is why the county has planned it for, as an urban service area. It's also better served by utilities, water and sewer and electricity. And someone asked earlier whether all of those utilities were adequate to support this project. And the answer to that question is yes, they are. And so what happens if you, if you don't plan your community, if you don't provide for housing at all price points, as is one of the philosophies of planning, uh, then you, uh, end up creating sprawl. You end up forcing people to buy one-acre, two-acre, three-acre lots interspersed around the county without any contribution, uh, to offsetting public service impacts. And so, uh, the, the concept of the urban service area, the concept of zoning and planning is to identify areas like this that are appropriate, uh, for, uh, public services and for locating higher-density populations. And by doing that, you take pressure off of your agricultural areas and, and better preserve them and better keep them viable, uh, for agricultural purposes instead of having them carved up as the inevitability of people sprawling out into the countryside.
That's it? Okay. All right. You like quietly just ended it? Um, yes.
Sam, so the CLO data center project across the road from us, uh, is that still moving forward? And, um, don't we run the risk of both these projects being under construction at the same time? And if that happens, does the county have the ability to coordinate between the two, uh, to ensure that, you know, construction traffic for one goes one way and for the other one goes the other way? And we, we can keep, keep the slow move of construction traffic and causing, from causing a bigger problem on the windy hillier road there?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Price, yeah. Site plan development, um, if and when zonings are approved, uh, come after. Um, and those site plans do coordinate entrances, does coordinate, uh, construction impact traffic to some degree. The timing aspect, um, the property across Knolls Mill was rezoned, uh, to light industrial for data center. We have not yet received a site plan, uh, for development of that particular property. Uh, we have on several other sites actually that are actively being site planned right now. That probably will change in the two years, uh, once Dominion, uh, works on some electric supply to the area. And then you'll probably see a little bit, uh, increase in pace of development for data centers in that area. That would coincide at the same time if this were to be approved, um, and moving forward, um, with development, especially if they anticipate to be done in five to six years, like you stated already. Uh, so there would be a high level of construction activity with the seventy-nine-hundred homes that wouldn't come till afterward, or seventy-nine-hundred vehicles additional traffic, uh, but in addition to the traffic that's already there today.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I want to just make the point that we're talking about a hundred-and-fifty homes in any given year, not seven-hundred-and-seventy homes. Also, if I could again, uh, someone asked earlier about the R-cut at Knolls Mill Road and Brandy Road. Uh, we, we are aware of that proffered condition as being constructed by the per, property that was rezoned as Williams Center, I think, or Williams Mill. I don't remember the new name. I think they have a new marketing name. Uh, but I understand that that, um, that R-cut, uh, plan took a long time to get approval through VDOT. Uh, but as of last week, it was approved and the developer intends to proceed with the construction of that R-cut. So I just wanted the audience to know that that is going to happen.
Okay. Anything else? I, um, just wanted to say that, um, I'm more than pleased to see the interaction that we've had in trying to, um, come to some happy meeting when we, um, dealing with a situation like this. If you want to see a model of how a planning commission, um, should run, um, a meeting should run, I commend all of you who've made your comments and, um, and the applicant in, in the presentation that you, that you made. Speak a little, um, about the elephant in the room. And I, uh, when we look at the comprehensive plan, we talk about the, um, the, um, the, the health, the safety and, um, convenience and general welfare of the public. And we've talked about the roads and, and, you know, in that particular area, that many homes in that particular area and the way that it's set up, transportation and all it's set up right now, without a doubt, we know it's not safe. We know it's not safe. We, uh, wouldn't have to say anything else. We, I wouldn't want to be on that road that often. I travel it a lot now, but, um, a lot of traffic would make me end up going, definitely, um, going in another direction. And to think about the schools and the access and, you know, the way they, the kids travel on the road. I think we got a real issue with safety here and I think that's the, uh, true elephant in the room, uh, when it comes to this. I don't know how much of the, um, for that profited, profit, um, profitability lie, um, as to how many homes that you could build in there and it'd be worth your while versus the number that we have. I don't know how we came up with that number. Um, but from a profit standpoint, I'm wondering whether, you know, that many homes is necessary to make a profit there, knowing that it's a safety, you know, roads and, um, when you told me fifty-five miles per hour driving through there. And I think I might have been doing fifty-five maybe sometime coming through there. Um, because it's, it's kind of a shortcut. But it won't be anymore, especially after the, what we already have approved there, um, to come and to add that quantity. Um, it's something I think to be fair to, I haven't, I didn't hear really any of the neighbors say that, um, um, they definitely didn't want it there. Okay? Even Mr. Mitchell said, look, I, I want to be able to still do what I want to do on my property when I want to do it.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, and I think that's only fair. But, um, if we're going to go into a, an area and encroach on these, um, the living, the solid living that is already going on there, then, um, the amount of impact, I think, um, you, we would want to be, we want to minimize it. So, um, I also wanted to, um, mention, um, there's one other thing, uh, yeah. Um, is that talking to and, and knowing what those, um, um, adjoining, um, neighbors, how they feel, um, is always something that.
Yes, sir.
You know, because in, in, in a community like this, you actually put in a town. We, we got another town out there when you look at the number of, um, you know, all that we talking about doing out there. And, um, and we all know it's going to bring so much traffic that what we have out there right now is not gonna. It, it's no, I don't, you know, I don't want to say I don't care what VDOT says. Um, that's not what I'm saying. But, um, but that those agencies have their responsibilities too. But, um, that many, we keep hearing the trips and all of that just increasing here tonight. But, you know, I don't think we, we really don't know how many, you know, um, trips, but it's, it's too many um, at this particular point. The way it's being presented is, is what I'm saying. So, um, you know, a lot of times we say we, um, um, what do they call it? Highball it? You know, we ask for this many, but if we don't get this many, you know, we really want this many. I'm hoping that's what Ryan Holmes is doing because, um, they have benefited a lot from this community. And I think it's a, a, a perfect opportunity to design what's going to happen there or what could happen there and what they'd like to have happen there to benefit this community. And, you know, you heard a lot of things here this evening. A lot of good questions have been asked. And the residents out in that area are very patient in the way that they, um, approached it. And I think on one side, uh, they don't know if they could contain themselves the way that Mr. Mitchell did, um, who was not a, um, um, public speaker. But he did a very good job in getting his point across and, and making us all feel the same way that it could be us. It could be us. So, um, but again, presentation, you guys are on point. We understand what you have there. Um, it's homework that, of course, that has to be done. But, um, you have asked for a deferral.
Yes, sir.
Or, uh, tabling. Um, I heard you say earlier maybe thirty days, but it's thirty days. Um, um, Sam, thirty days is, um, how much time they have left to, in that clock that when the?
Mr. Chairman, to answer that question, uh, the applicant, uh, did in their deferral request, uh, mentioned November or December. I mentioned November or December, so that they were decided themselves on that. But also, you know, keep in mind the 12 month clock that you're referring to that's in our code, that does get extended with each deferral request from the applicant. So we're okay there as long as they ask for a deferral.
Okay, okay. All right. So that's where we have, but you, you all, to accomplish what we have just discussed here tonight is, to me, 30 days is a short period of time to to accomplish. But that's your decision, not mine. So we appreciate everything that you shared thus far.
Thank you, sir. When we come back, we will try to have, all of the things that you mentioned are measurable. Knolls Mill Road has different characteristics along different segments. And when we come back, we will try to break down the road and show you volumes on different sections to to help understand that issue that you raised.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Out of respect, and you can have a seat, thank you very much. Out of respect, and what we normally would do for our applicants is is honor the requests when they have asked for, you know, continuance in like this situation that we have here. So, but it's up to those of us here right now. So commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that case Z dash four, five, eight, dash two, three, dash one be passed on to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of denial as it does show significant impacts to the health, safety and welfare of our community, not only through the impacts of traffic and safety that that brings, but also the burden that it'll bring upon our school system and public utilities as well.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, probably move in second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed likewise. What was that, three and three?
Chairman, I think it was three to three.
Three and three, okay. And that's and that's good. And we have a chance to discuss it, you know, a little bit further. And, you know, again, out of, you know, given the, given the, we don't know exactly what the applicant would come back with, but just giving the applicant an opportunity to, you know, to to bring back more information to us and and to address some of the questions that we have addressed here tonight. And then the applicant was willing to actually stand and give us another presentation, which all they really had to do was just ask us to continue it. So, you know, much effort and all has been put into it and we don't know if they can reach a happy median here, but, you know, they've come this far, so that's why I vote, you know, in favor of the continuance.
We've already, Mr. Chairman, we've already had a work session on this, provided a lot of input there that was not utilized. That's why I don't think giving them that deferral is going to make the difference because they didn't listen to a lot of the input the first time that we gave them.
Yeah, and yet a situation like this is a very large, what do I want to say, package that you have to fill. And, you know, a lot of different questions are being asked, a lot of different ways you can address them, a lot of different ways, well, some of the agencies getting some of the information that you need to have by a certain time is is a challenge also. And that's why when I was looking at this also and thinking about it and in reference to giving them, they say they would try to do it in 30 days. And I think that's what the issue is right now. It takes more time to really delve into this to get the information from these agencies and and things like that. So, but that's why I felt like maybe, you know, 60, you know, if we gave them a couple of months and then let's see what develops from there. But.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think one of the issues some of us have on the board, I know myself, the amount of homes and the amount of stress it's going to cause. We want, we want the development towards the town that this is. 700 homes right up next to the railroad tracks, right up next to all that infrastructure, the Walmart, the schools, they're going to be both schools. That's going to, that's going to change the school bound, having been school board, that's going to change school boundaries. It's going to affect our schools, but it's going to affect a lot of roads, tertiary roads that feed those roads because they're not all of them, they're going to be home bodies and homebound. They're going to work, they're going to go places. It's going to cause, that's a lot of homes.
So what do you think if, what I was sharing, if the proposal came back to where they scaled down on it? Because I agree with you 100% with all this, it's too many, it's too big of a project, you know, now, but to have some homes and all in there, we are a community who definitely need more homes, you know, and we know that and that's going to continue. But I, that's kind of where I was, you know, going with it also to see if they could bring us back a proposal that would scale down, you know, in 60 days and see what we get.
And to be honest, we talked about affordable housing and offering a $5,000 credit.
Nate, Mike.
Sorry, and offering a $5,000 credit and affordable housing. That is a, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen, that's not affordable housing. Paying closing costs is not affordable housing.
Yes, yes.
That's, it needs to be, we talk about it, we preach about it, and we don't do anything about it. So we've got developers that can do something about it and they choose not to. I understand profit, you got to make, again, this profit, this will more than profit them $100 million.
You know, you take me right to another reason that I would like to see this because we've never seen a developer do this before. And that is to bring back a a package where, like you're saying with the affordable housing, they've heard some things here this evening that, you know, I don't know, where they haven't heard from us before, excuse me, that they haven't heard from us before. So I would just like to see, because we've never really had a developer really listen to us when it comes to, you know, hey, look, this might fit from a standpoint of too many houses here right now. When it comes to affordable housing, that's a key, you know, $5,000. And I think I figured it out, what would it be, 50 people or 100 people, whatever it was, based on what they say they were offer. And I just, you know, it it still might be something that would fit, but it's just too big right now, the way it's presented to us.
And I want the developers to understand, and I'm not trying to use this as a public, I grew up in sectioning house most of my young adult life. That's not what I'm asking you to do. That's not what I think communities are asking you to do. Just need affordable housing. Doesn't have to be government subsidies, it just needs to be affordable. I understand profits, just still make profits.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to see, you know, like to see just that, something to come back to where we could see what they present, because we've never had anybody present that before, listen to us and come back to us before.
Mr. Chairman, you bring up a.
A little, a little more.
You bring up a good point about not listening to us, though. When we had the work session, we talked about affordable housing in there, they did not listen. That is my point, they are not listening, this is not going to change. And Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, that actually did not used to be marked as mixed use. And I think as we look at our community, we need to think about that and it's sitting on the tracks. I think it got, in my opinion, incorrectly labeled as mixed use. Being on the railroad tracks and stuff like that, it is much more suitable. And with that road system, the way that it is laid out for commercial or industrial or light industrial use, that is not a suitable piece of land for housing. And I think that's something that the commissioners need to take into consideration, too. We don't need to keep drawing things out like we have time and time again and go give them another shot, give them another shot. Had a work session, provided feedback, was not listened to, now we want to drag it out longer, keep extending that clock out and wasting everybody in the county's time and money. I don't think that that's fair to our residents.
But I understand this too, it's a process, that it's a process that there we go. And it's not, I don't think it was, I wouldn't think they purposely did not bring us back everything that we were looking for. But but at this particular point, we're decisively saying, this is what we want. And, you know, you know exactly which direction it would go if we see y'all back again, you know, with it. Because she, Katie has some very good points here, and we all do, we're concerned for the safety and well-being of this community. And, but, you know, we have to give those who come the opportunities to work at it also. And I think we need to look at it on both sides, the applicant as well as the citizens that are there. So that's why I would, you know, like to see at least, you know, if if it's 60 days. But, you know, that's where I would go. So do we have, go ahead.
A couple of things. One, so I think, first of all, I wasn't part of the work session, I couldn't attend that that day, so I apologize for that. But I think in terms of the affordable housing, I think you've heard some things today that could change your mix design that you may not have considered in the past. I also think that the infrastructure is a big concern to me is the transportation network, which you know about. I think we owe it as an obligation to whatever application goes to board supervisors, denial or approval, to make it the best plan possible to go to the board supervisors. I think in addition, we don't have VDOT review of this project. I think before we make a decision on it, we should have their final review of it. And I also think the amount of units is a concern based on the amount of units, but that's something that could be looked at. But that's, I think, in my mind, we want to bring the best plan, whether denial or approved, to the board supervisors on behalf of of what we can get.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I appreciate you very much making the point that they need to look at scaling down the number of units. Because at the conclusion of the discussion, I understood the applicant to be worried about how to fix 770 units with, into some form or fashion we find acceptable. But at the end of the day, I mean, I would be very interested, I am very interested to hear to hear what they bring back as a revised concept. But if it's 770 units or even something close to it with Knolls Mill Road and Rogers Road the way they are now, I don't see how it ever works, you know?
I agree.
So if they can scale it down and maybe provide a better mix of housing, then maybe it will work. But if it's anywhere close to what they presented tonight, I just don't see how we get there.
Okay, I'll just say that we've spoken pretty clearly and, but I do specifically say that we need to honor any applicant's request for a deferral. Like Mr. Kilby said, we need to try to have the best plan available to send forward or deny. It needs to be the best plan possible. So I still say defer it.
At what point does that responsibility of that plan become our responsibility and not the applicant's? That's that's where I'm at. They they've worked with staff, they have time with staff to develop that application. Why is it our burden to continue to walk them through and babysit them to do their jobs?
Because what we said earlier, that it's a process. And, you know, we don't make that decision, but we, but when it comes to the, well, let me put it this way, and just make sure, in our respect, that's what this is all about. But we do want to make sure we give the applicant every opportunity possible. Now, I agree with you. What we asked the last time it was, but I don't know many developers that have come in here and given us the, what we wanted when it comes to affordable housing, okay? But we're going to address that to them. You know, I say, look, let's see what we can get if it's 60 days. Give me 60 days, let's see what they bring to us in 60 days. And if not, I agree 100% with you, not listening, okay? But this is the first time that, you know, other than the work session, that we've had them, you know, actually here. And we have actually focused on the fact that, scale these houses, you know, scale it back, this is too big of a project there. So, and and all of us know that we need more housing. But we want it to shape, be shaped for the citizens of our community to be able to be a part of it versus everybody coming from Northern Virginia and being able to buy a $500,000 townhouse. I agree with you 100%. But I would just like to see, see it, you know, that away if we get it, that. So we need a motion. Go right ahead.
One more thing, I'd like to still be a part of this process. I will not be here at the December meeting. So I would like the 30 days to be able to be a part of this and and see this through.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that case Z dash four, five, eight, dash two, three, dash one be sent to the board of supervisors with denial as it does show significant impacts to the health, safety and welfare of the Culpeper citizens in regards to traffic, the burden on our school system and our public utilities.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the applicant's request to defer regarding case and request Z dash four, five, eight, dash two, three, dash one till the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is, you'd mentioned maybe 60 days, is 30 days, is 30 days enough or should we give them 60 days?
Correct me if I'm wrong, they said November or December, correct?
Yes, they did. Yes. Excuse me, any other discussion?
I think we wanted Nate to participate in that. That's why we wanted it.
Yeah. So, okay, any other discussion? Sam, did you have?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind you that you are without a couple of commissioners tonight and I, you know, we don't know their schedule and I appreciate Commissioner Clancy wanting to be there wholeheartedly, but if it's best for the application, you know, to do a December regular scheduled meeting, maybe that's the case. But I just wanted to remind you that he may not be here, but we may get two others back. So I don't know that that will be the case, but I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, okay.
I'm glad to amend my motion if we got a consensus.
One thing I had was, didn't we have some commissioners that said they could not attend the December meeting as well earlier?
I think I chairman, right?
Yes, I think I am. Do we, do we have a problem in it, do we have a problem in it being January?
Well, the applicant.
This is a lot of information here.
No, we, we, we don't necessarily, the clock will continue as long as the applicant asks for deferral. If they don't ask for deferral, we do need to push it along.
Right.
Right now, they ask for deferral.
So this time, we could make it nine days.
November or the year December regular scheduled meeting is the way Mr. Patrick had in his letter for on behalf of the applicant.
That's what he had in his letter. You have a problem with January?
No, sir. We do not have VDOT comments yet.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor, point of order.
Yes, it is. Okay, all right. It wasn't him, I should have been asking, it's you.
I amend my motion to move to defer until the regularly scheduled meeting in January 2025.
Okay, any other discussion? Oh, no, the second, do you?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
On the amendment, I mean, on the amended motion is what we have before.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to stick with what they originally asked for and it needs to be November or December.
We do have a motion already on the floor. So no other discussion? All in favor, aye? Or raise your right hand? All opposed? Okay, all right. We will reopen the, we will continue the public hearing on, at that January meeting also. Okay, all right. All right, okay, that's your new business, any other? Morgan, you didn't even put anything down here, discussion or anything down there, huh? You just left us. Okay, any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, aye? Meeting is adjourned. Okay.